To reply to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All meeting in order, through the agenda.
Make motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second this motion.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Through the minutes.
Motion to approve as printed from December 2nd.
I'll second.
Those were quick.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All, carry. General public. Your trade and chain of dealers, morning. Monty.
I'm here for your tax rate, I don't know, 13, 14, 15, 3, 4, 5, 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Suppose we see if Janet?
I got it, please.
You got all the papers?
And Janet said to me to just subdue the current year taxes.
Okay.
Parcels.
That's what, yeah, that's what it says. If it's just like nor- normal when they do it, the taxes with the drainage would be...
If there was any drainage.
If there was drainage.
It doesn't say anything about drainage, so, oh, my goodness.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All, carry.
And then, I got another one, we got a certain state deed on it, first year due, so we got a $24 deal on a short property, which would be a lot more than two. I didn't have any other paper left in this.
That's, when, in June?
Yeah, they switched, they switched it to us at 29th of May.
Oh.
Let me check the 10th of November.
I won't jump over here.
Dave's just gonna roll himself right out the door here, too, but...
He's got another part.
This is all, all of that?
Yeah. See, he's gonna have a lot more mowing.
Hmm, I'm gonna go down now.
One of them, Monty said he was right after his house, I said, why don't you take it over, he said, you've got too much already.
Four, eight, fifteen dollars.
That's one of them deals, Monty, you start mowing on Monday and you're hopefully done by Friday when weekend starts.
Then you turn around and start over.
Disgusting Christmas tree. Yeah, on the, actually, four properties, three of them, they've gotten with a tax sale deed, and we had already abated the prior year taxes, and now they're coming back to the current, uh, current year. And the other fourth one, property, is land they got from a quick claim deed that they'll own and need the current year abated, so they can get exempt from...
Okay, Monty has mentioned lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Three, four.
And lots four and five.
Three, four, five.
Three, four, five. And then now he's talking lots one and two, they made a motion on the other ones, and now he's talking lots one and two.
I did a short property, gentlemen.
Okay. It would've been that bill I gave you, do you happen to have that?
I probably do. Well, I'm trying to flip it around and just hit you with it. More to it.
Got this one, is that, so it's lot one and two, block one, is that not on the other list?
I just had several parcels, because I wasn't sure which of them you were gonna be...
So, these two.
Are these like original town, or, I'm assuming, unless it just means all of this, I can look it up.
Oh, these don't have labels.
That's probably why I put mine, I didn't have labels.
Yep, those are, there's four properties involving multiple parcels, but, yeah, I can get you more afterwards, but, yeah, they were, three with their tax sale deed, and one they got with a quick claim deed, that we just need to get the current year ones.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Taken care of. What's that water project you guys are doing?
One, two, and three.
Need a motion for the other one?
Need a new...
Yeah, because you've already made one. Well, did you vote on it?
No.
Okay. You'd have to either amend the motion, or vote this one down and start over.
I can, I'll make an amendment. I just need to know how I'm supposed to order it.
You want to amend the motion to include, um, lots one and two.
Okay.
And it looks like lots, lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Alright, so I will make...
And you mentioned lots three and four already, so...
Are you totally confused?
I'm, yeah.
So that would bring everything, everything...
One, two, three, and a four, and thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Well, one and two are block one, I don't know about three, four, and five, because I don't have labels, I just have a description.
Okay.
Or a number, so...
Alright, we've got it, amendment to vote on, did we have a second?
I did second it. Yep, I'll second the amended motion.
Okay. Yeah, there should be four and five, because it was, what was...
Okay.
Now, the original...
There's no three, there's just four and, oh, there's three, four, and five.
Okay.
Which is that one, block three, original town? And then thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, block nine.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, block nine, original town?
Oh, that one does take sixteen, keep sixteen on there.
Okay. Good thing I got my register today.
And then the...
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, trying to get this, okay, block, block nine.
Still wants to amend this, they're talking...
They have incorporated towns.
Okay. Now, lots one and two, block one, of what description? Well, that's the one we don't know.
Yeah, we...
Okay. Alright, let me check the labels.
Okay, well, we passed the amendment, now the original motion.
Yeah, we'll just go back to the original.
All in favor?
The original, the original motion just included the first parcels, not the...
So we want to turn that one down?
All in favor of the original motion?
Yes, on the original motion.
No, opposed?
Aye.
Aye, yes, opposed. Okay, so now we've got them all approved on the, on the amendment, correct?
You have a motion, a second, to make an amendment, you haven't had a vote on that?
Yeah, now we can do the amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just don't, I can't remember all the numbers.
The amendment now includes lots one and two, block one.
One and two.
Lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, of block nine. And lots three, four, and five, of block three.
Ah, that's clear now.
Okay. Now we'll just make a motion to...
Already have a...
She's already got a motion.
Okay, we got it all, yeah.
Aye.
Aye. That was a...
He's already come late there.
Yeah, let him remember it, find that one.
I can't wait to read that in the paper.
Look, I think you should.
After Reimer stepped on his tongue several times, we finally got through that.
Okay, anything else, Monty? Anything else?
No, no.
See, most times they're gonna go through, every once in a while you gotta have a...
But you pretty well take care of the tax abatement, not a thing for Monty.
You know, there's two more coming.
Monty, from now on. And Monty says that he will not take over the properties personally.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, yeah.
Thank you. Ben, you're up. You're five minutes early. Morning.
Morning. Got a couple items on the agenda today. First is to approve voucher number three, the project LC-393-006. Uh, this is the final voucher for the twin culvert that they did up on Georgia Avenue West Abode. Uh, this is the retainage, that is, in the amount of fifty-nine twenty-seven and forty-one cents. That's it? Yes.
All done now?
They're, they're all done, we've got all of the paperwork for them. Uh, I think the only thing, we got some timber claims that we gotta pick up from there. Um, and basically pull the nails and get them stacked and... Never know when you need a timber plant. Well, so that's good. Yep. Make a motion to approve pay voucher number three to Midwest Contracting for project number LC-393-006, for five thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-one cents.
Is it second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All, carry.
The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county right of way to Loveton Sons, Inc. This is for the drainage well closure over by Bradgate. Um, this is for them to be able to work in our right of way across the road with that private tile. He did not know if he was gonna get there this year or not.
I was gonna say, but I'm...
Yeah, it's unfortunate. I mean, he was, he was optimistic that if the weather holds out, he could get there, but, yeah, he's still got a couple, he's still got one or two jobs to finish before he gets to it.
So, it's only good for a year, then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, if it comes in in the spring, he doesn't have to...
That's why I was gonna ask, yeah, thanks for asking, right, so we put a year date timestamp on it.
Once it's been approved, I mean, I guess we don't have...
We hope, we hope it's less than a year.
Right, we don't have a hard and fast expiration date. Once we've done the process, basically, we've looked at it, and we've said, you're fine to do this whenever you get to it.
Oh, yeah. Good question, though.
Do they notify you then when they're coming back, if, say, it was spring, they'll tell you we're gonna be there?
Yes, because they'll still wanna, they'll still wanna come in and close the road.
Right.
And with this permit, it says that they have to notify us, I think, forty-eight hours before they want to come in and close it.
Well, I would make a motion to approve this.
Yeah, I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Aye.
All, carry.
Other than that, we're fixing a tile, uh, north of my partner's house right now, on Elm Avenue, for, uh, blockage under the road Mitch Neve reported to us, um, and we're...
Do you have to tear up the road to fix it, or is it just...
Yeah, we'll call it up on Friday, hopefully we can get it all finished, so...
What road is that?
Elm.
Elm.
Just north of the highway three.
Yeah.
So, they're, they should be making the connections here today and finishing that project up.
Okay.
Oh, good. What'd you have to do, replace the...
Replace, uh, I believe it was to the fifteen or eighteen inch underneath the road.
Put cement back in there?
Right, uh, I, I think what we did is we actually tried to do a wall here, so, we'll see how it holds up.
It'll be fine.
Yeah, so, we put that in, and I think we backfilled with rock, just because of the time of year, and the worry of frost and the dirt.
Yeah.
They did not pack them back in right, so...
Good. Did you, speaking of tile crossings, I, they, but I just wanna ask, the concern, and I, uh, not too far away from there, um, that you talked about Albans, they had been requested to do some tiling in the field, and they had a concern under the...
Is that the one under the white top?
Yes. Did you have a chance to investigate that at all?
We did, uh, Benny's supposed to get in there, in the south ditch with the backhoe, and try and locate the tile. Uh, the north intake where it's at, we weren't able to run the tile locator through it, because it's such a tight bend without disturbing it, and there's no intake in the south ditch. So, we're gonna try and locate the tile on the south ditch, and then run the tile locator through it, ensure that it's not closed.
Okay, so you're, yeah, 'cause I knew you were aware of it, and you have kinda started on trying to figure out what's going on.
We've got a work order for it.
Yeah.
And Benny's supposed to be trying to get down in the ditch with his, uh, loader backhoe, and find the tile, but I don't think he's done it yet.
Okay, but, yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Good, 'cause it's a drainage district tile, and, don't know.
I, I think this is a private file. But we still have to ensure that it's clear under the road.
Right, well, I, not to drag out all this drainage stuff, but they just got into a lot of confusion, the farmer requested some tiling, they found all this issues with tiles not working, and they found potential under the road.
Is this west of our east somewhere?
Yes, it'd be, uh... It's east of, east of the bridge, up the hill. I can't think of the gals' name that lives on the north side of the road, it's right in...
It's a different one than I...
This is right in here.
Okay.
Because then it, it comes, the, the tile comes south and dumps into the pond at the hunting ground on the south side of the road.
That wasn't one out of the three.
Oh, that's not?
No. It's the one you talked to Mel Bams about.
Oh.
Over to the west there.
You're talking south and west?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, again, that one we've got a work order for, but we haven't done anything with.
Yeah, okay, no, sorry, two different projects, but same, same concern, by a block each other.
I talked, Corey about the one up north, I talked to Mel, I guess, on the one down south.
Right, yeah.
And that is a drainage district.
Yeah, that one to the west, but I know you're aware of it, you just haven't got to it yet.
Right, we haven't gotten to it yet.
It'll be something similar to what you're working on over there, I'm sure, trying to figure out...
Figure out what we've got, and whether or not it's plugged.
Whereabouts, so...
We've got, Benny should be done working on this tile jetter, uh, trailer that he's been putting together.
Oh, good.
This fall.
So we'll have our own...
So we'll have our own mini version of a tile jetter, I think there's eighty or a hundred foot of hose on it, so, it should be enough that we can clean tile all the way across our right of way.
Got a question for you, I know we've discussed this multiple times, do you think we should buy our own camera?
Our own camera?
Yeah, so you can just shove a camera in there and actually see what they look like.
Possibly, um...
I mean, does it, would it save time and money when you can just put it up?
I don't care if the joints are offset as far as the condition, all we have to do is prove that water flows from one side to the other, and they don't have to be in...
Perfect alignment?
Perfect alignment, or perfect order, they just have to function.
But if they're offset, they're sucking dirt, probably.
Possibly.
I, I don't know, I just thought, you know, I didn't know if it'd be a time-saving thing to have a camera, so you can just open it up, shove the camera in there, and see what the problem is.
It, it depends on how small they are, and, as far as cameras, I guess, I haven't done any research on them, um...
It'd be more interesting to see how much we spent the last couple of years. You've rented one.
We haven't rented, we haven't rented a camera ever.
I think the camera...
Justify it.
Is more like more to a lot of drainage district issues than probably what secondary wells runs into.
I know, the only one, the only person around here that I know of that's got one is Jensen, he's got his own, with filing.
Yeah, well, I, really, I mean, that's what I've seen is...
Well, and what I've seen, most of plumbers, I mean, are the cameras, or do a hundred feet.
Oh, there's...
And that's all we need, we don't need one that needs to go five hundred feet or whatever, we just need one that does it right of way.
Okay.
And I don't think they're terribly expensive.
In your spare time, you could look into it.
I can, yeah, I can check.
Yeah, just do my research.
I, I, I have...
I didn't know if it'd be a, a labor-saving tool that we could use, that would cut down some of this wondering and guessing, and you just open up the end and shove the camera up in there and see what it looks like, and you can tell, you can show the farmer, it looks clean as a whistle here, and then you can't sit there and complain about it, or...
Well, a lot of times what, I mean, usually for the farmers, the first thing they do is call us.
I know.
Why, because we're free.
Yeah.
We don't cost them anything. And then it's, once we've proved that the tile works from our right of way to our right of way, then they go beyond and either talk to their neighbor, or get a tiling contractor come in, and, and do some exploration digging on their property. But we're usually always the first to...
First, or first call, because it doesn't cost them.
Because it doesn't cost them anything.
Okay.
It's not a bad idea, but I really think that the application is gonna be more in drainage district tiles, on cameras.
But I can look into pricing.
Yeah, yeah, although, I mean, nothing huge, just something to do the right of ways, I don't know if it'd be a time save, a time-saving tool.
And then, uh, I guess I've made calls around, I'm supposed to be getting budgeting numbers for buildings, uh, called and talked to Bertie's assistant up north, I've talked to Gromback, uh, Sands, a couple of the others, uh, got one call in to Cleary, but I haven't talked to anybody yet, but, trying to get budget numbers and figure out what something like this, we're talking about, is gonna cost us.
Yeah.
And then, obviously, the additional assets of law enforcement would just be costs on that, I mean, they're looking at wanting to put a bathroom in, and, so you're looking at plumbing and all kinds of stuff, and...
Is that, why did we go, where'd we come up with that idea?
That was them.
You know, somebody's gonna start living out there?
Looking for a man cave?
I mean, this is not what we're up to.
Yeah.
I thought the biggest thing on additional was maybe a heated fortune, they're, they're looking at possibly...
Well, if they put a bathroom in, they're gonna have...
Well, I mean, I've seen no bathroom, but potentially a section of it.
That's just about freezing.
Right.
And what they were looking at is, uh, possibly putting an office area in that, uh, for when they get together before, trades or whatnot, to have an area that they can lay everything out. I don't know, so that'll all be above and beyond the, the base.
Yeah.
Low dollars.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna have to bring Dean with us.
Yeah, I think something going a little further along the line.
This Christmas wish list got a little big.
Yeah, well, and, and it's always an option, you know, you can be priced off and say, yeah, no, it's too expensive.
I can tell you right now, it's too expensive.
Well, depending on, I mean, if they stub it, how far they got around it, and whatever.
Yeah.
You know, it's...
Well, thanks for checking on that.
As soon as I hear prices, I'll let you guys know.
You need to check with Morton Buildings, or, you said Cleary?
Yep, I talked to Morton, I'll wait to hear back from them, too, so...
Okay. Did you get, uh, couple dimensions? You kinda got a rough idea?
Uh, our rough dimensions are two hundred by sixteen.
Okay.
That's three bays for law enforcement, three bays for emergency management, three for us, and one for the courthouse.
Okay. So you gotta put, yeah.
Okay. Sounds safe, sounds really small.
Yeah.
I can always say if you don't, you always build them too small.
Right.
That sounds pretty good, though.
It does.
I don't think that's too small, and I'm curious to hear more about the bathroom story.
Well, let's say Ben told us.
Well, it's not, I got him that and this, he's only looking, it's not, he, he didn't request a bathroom.
No, no, and, and they're, you know, this is the wish list.
Yeah, like I say, it's Christmas.
Yep. I'll look outside, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, well, I'll say that, but good, thanks for doing that.
Yep, and hopefully we should be done cleaning the section of Goodell's Road tomorrow, I think, so, we have four or five trucks home today, so, should be good.
Oh, very.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have the machine right now to cast out in the field, they're using that to face this tile in my apartment, or so, as soon as that machine's available, we'll move that machine down and start casting out in the field as well, and it'll go twice as fast.
Okay.
Good.
Alright.
Good.
Anything else?
Did I get anything else, Ben?
Nope.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay, let's jump down to claim directly.
Already, I had claims of a hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and eleven and sixty cents for general, and range of fifty-six thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Did you get your question answered?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, carry. Okay. Okay. Jamie, we're a couple minutes early.
No, they don't, they're really concerned about being early.
Yeah. No, no, that's okay.
Good.
Here, get me back up next to you.
How are you? Well, I keep looking out, thinking they're only talking an inch, but the way the wind's blowing.
The way it's worse up there, is it worse up there?
Yeah, I think we've already got a couple inches up there.
What's, you guys just aren't living right up there, that way.
Something going on. Too close to Minnesota.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta be, yeah.
Well, uh, what we're giving you here is the year end report for the, uh, twenty nineteen year, actually, um, you see there, it's, it's pretty much about the same way we all, we do all previous years. Um, with Humble, you guys are a little unique this year in that, um, your numbers went up, um, some here, I usually tried to do a comparison the previous year, and last year you were at a thousand twenty-five individuals and four hundred and twenty-five households, and this year up to twelve hundred and ninety-three individuals and five hundred and forty-two households. So, um, that tells me a couple different things, is that, um, I think primarily the people are, know where we're at, they get their access in the services, and that's a good thing, that's a, that's a robust thing. Um, what we, uh, primarily did issue, your second page on there is, um, is basically the demographics of the characteristics that, of the people that come in, and the households that come in for services, and really the one we like to focus upon is that last page in Duvars, that, that tells us, um, services that have been used in the county, and the cost of those services relative to what they've used. Um, the same scenario with the top one is the emergency and energy services, um, we're the big user this year, right along with the food program. Uh, with the energy services, that would include our low-income housing, energy assistance program, Light Eep, uh, which kicks in, um, we started doing automatic eligible's in August, which are the elderly and disabled households that qualify, and then, really, the program starts to kick into full swing about November, so, we're, we're pretty much in the beginning stages of it. Um, I don't know where we're at sizably in comparison to last year, um, at this time, it's always hard to say, but we seem to be at the same level anyway, based on what Jennifer has told me, that's our director. Uh, you could see from last year, though, how we, uh, in that program, we serve six hundred and thirty-five households and fifteen hundred individuals with that program, and it costs about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Um, the food program continues to be a growing thing out here, and a high need, um, and you can see there, the households serve a thousand ninety-two thousand, these numbers are duplicated, uh, meaning that the household may have come in more, more than once during that time, okay? Um, also, the big one, then, that, another one is the special projects, which includes back-to-school, um, holiday projects, um, and such, like this time of year, we begin to see a lot of people coming in with the family action program.
Yeah, we do adopt a family year, two hundred families.
Uh, the one I've been talking about with all the counties that come in is the weatherization, and that, that one is a little bit down, and it's twelve original counties we serve, and I, the explanation, it isn't, it isn't, okay, let me explain that. We, North Bio Community Action out of Mason City, our sister program, over there covers nine counties, which is Kassup. Um, what happened, we continue to provide the weatherization services over there, and they did a different model than we did, what we do is we take the money that we get for weatherization, and then we work with contractors, um, to do the work, and then what we do is we do the inspections, and there's a lot to the inspections, but that usually takes up enough time and keeps the costs at a minimum, and puts more money back in the pool that way. But with their model, when they did theirs, they had their own crews, they had, and they did their own inspections, um, and Dick got out of that, Dick Ger is the director, who decided to pull out of the service, it just wasn't feasible financially, but then we continued to do that. So they took that nine, our tenth county region, and they split it up among, um, three sister programs, both being one, and then the other northeast, um, and then went out of operation threshold, out of waterloo. We took on Sarabord, O'Worth, Winnebago, Hancock, and Kassup counties, in addition to the twelve we already did, so now we're up to seventeen counties, we're not gonna... But with that said, uh, we got lucky, and we were able to hire the director, uh, from that program, and he came on to do the evaluations and the assessments for us, so that was a month, we didn't have a lot of training, so... So that was a month, we didn't have a lot of training to money. Part of the reason that's a big deal is these guys have to have an HVAC and be licensed in HVAC. They also have to have a sense of contracting background, so they understand what they're looking for, as well as to train them in the weatherization services that we do, to make sure the contractors that we do work with are doing the job. So getting up to capacity over there has been a real challenge, because we've had to take one of our guys over there and work with John very closely, get contractors on board, so we were able to get them up to pretty much full swing by now, which is a real good accomplishment for less than a year. So with that said, we're going to be able to pull more back over to this area after we've gotten them going. So we'll be doing more over the next year with the twelve counties that we originally had. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. One of the things I do want to point out, too, is that at the bottom there, you see, we have spent a little over a quarter of a million dollars, a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, almost two hundred and seventy-six in comparison to last year's two hundred and twenty thousand. So we've gone up to considerable amount of money that's been brought back into the Humboldt County area for the services that we're providing. We did ask, in this letter, you'll notice a slight increase for them. One of the, and I think we talked about this a little bit last year, at least in these years, this is my eighth year here, I have never, at least in my time to come and to talk to you, I've asked for an increase. I've kept it at the same. The reason that we're doing that is we're having a struggle throughout our twelve county area of maintaining staff. One of the things that we struggle with is the federal government has not increased our community service block grant, which is the monies that we use to pay our outreach offices over in the twelve counties. I'll give you, for instance, it's somewhat embarrassing, but it's a reality that we have to work with. When we hire outreach staff, we hire the ten eighteen an hour. When you compare us KCs or Walmart, that's pretty sad. But that's the money that we have, and that's what we have to work with. And we usually can get staff, which is interesting, retaining staff becomes a challenge. So we're always struggling to figure out new ways to manipulate the budget, to cut costs somewhere, to try to figure that out. And I got to be frank with you, cutting costs is kind of the bone of the shady, bone off bone now, where we can't really do too much. So we have an increase slightly, it's only a few percentage points on the amount that you gave me the year previously. So you will notice a slight increase from that.
Other than that, unless you've got questions, and I've got anything to add to all this?
I don't think so, just thank you for all your support over the last few years. And if any of you would like to, like, come sit with one of us, and we can fully explain all of our programs, this is kind of a nutshell and overview, so we can, you know, have a conversation about everything that we do upstairs. There's a lot that goes on, and we're just open Monday to Thursday here in Humboldt. But with the numbers increasing the way they are, there could be the potential, and Becky will love to hear this, that, you know, we may have to go to being a full-time office, with the numbers continuing to increase.
With that, they, the ministerial association has turned the food pantry, the operation of the food pantry over to UGMO because they run one of another counties?
Yeah.
So it isn't like they're first one Humboldt County to run there. Because the ministers are, what we've had is, we've tried to have ministers that are running operations, but they're one phone call away from jumping in the car and taking off for Rochester because someone just had a heart attack, or someone in Iowa City, or today Pastor Aaron and Pastor Carl have a funeral, which they weren't planning on last week, but today they have a funeral. So if something came up today and we needed to get old, so they decided they were going to put it in UGMO's hands. And they've done a good job, so we're.
Well, Equin, we appreciate you, Bruce, for instance, you're always there to help us when we need help. That's become a big issue, especially this time of year. The ladies are strapped. I mean, I went out the other day, she gave me a call and said, one of the outreach in Palo Alto couldn't even get into the food pantry to unload a stock that she got in because the applications were in. So I took a couple guys out of the office that we just put the car shelves for. So it's everybody working together to get it all done. And like I said, the money is there to bring other people in, so it doesn't seem people are volunteering as much as they like, especially this time of year.
I lay on Dave, when I can't get there, I call Dave and say, hey, what are you doing?
Well, our trucks are getting bigger. At the last truck we just ordered was like almost seven thousand pounds, so that's a lot to.
But by the same token, I'll have to explain to them that what we were doing, we had, you know, we only have so much money that they can buy food with. But they can buy the food cheaper through Des Moines than what they can, nothing against Hy-Vee or Fairway, they're in it to make money. But when we make our orders, we have to make our orders so that we can get the most bang for our buck. So in order to do that, they are buying more from, instead of getting four thousand pounds, we're getting six and seven thousand to make it through the month, because our numbers are up, so.
And our counties up, or other counties up?
Well, there's a couple others that are, but yeah, I've been seeing somewhere that's been pretty stagnant, if numbers have been. I'll use Clay, for instance, which really kind of surprised me.
I kind of like stagnant numbers in this.
Yeah, that would be good.
But that most have been about the same as last year, maybe a little, a few under, a few over, not anything sizable. But you're actually one of the ones that had, well.
It's a large increase.
Yeah, a large increase of two hundred. That's not a lot of people in the scheme of things, but it's some, so.
Right, right.
With a county like this, it is two hundred.
That's a big percentage.
So many people.
That's a percentage, it's a lot.
Can we get kind of any guarantees that this raise is cost or donation is going to go to these entry lower employees?
Well, I could, I know I have ten, that's where it needs to go to get people to come and work for you guys. It does, it does. Yeah, yeah, there, I mean, like we've always told you, every year, and we've always stood by that, every dollar that's given, regardless if it's from you or anybody that lives in this county, stays in this county. So, yeah, the adjustment will have to go in there. And that, the big thing that we've been held up on is that people say, well, why don't you increase your salaries? We had a couple of them do that. Palo Alto's supervisors were pushing me to increase, so we didn't have to turn over there. And I gave their general relief, so we were going to take the money from general leave to do that. But like I told them, if I do that, which I'm okay with, you do understand, people talk. So if this gal was making the same as these three over here, and then all of a sudden she gets a boost, but the other two don't, how do you explain to them? You know, I mean, they understand that they got more money over in that county, but it doesn't mean that they work any less or don't work as hard. So we have to play that game a little bit to be able to get it balanced out. So answer to your question long answer.
That's all, I'd like to say, is money go to the startup people who are, you're trying to get people in. That, that pay scale's way too low.
It is, and we know that.
We've been having this conversation.
And I've sat on other boards where, you know, oh, we'll give a three percent across the board. Well, the guy's making seventy, eighty, get a nice raise, the one's making ten dollars, get thirty cents.
Yeah. Well, you can let that three percent, if you have any insurance increases, or sometimes you don't even get. As an employee, you don't even see.
No, you don't, you don't see nothing.
Yeah.
So that's where that money needs to go.
Yeah, it's a conversation we've been having for a while, because of the turnover. We have to do something. We can't be a revolving door. Because that isn't your family.
Well, you don't have to get them trained and.
Yeah, you get them trained, and you're gone, and constant turnover and inefficiencies.
Yep.
So you're better off to put your money there.
That's right, that's right.
Well, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah. Need anything, please, and again, see the offers there if you want to come and spend some time. People we do are more than welcome.
I'll probably see you, next week the truck come? I haven't got a text from.
No, we had truck last Monday.
Okay.
We loaded, yeah.
All right.
You missed it.
Yeah, you missed it.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, running on down.
Sure, I think I have it.
I'll try to save it back. Okay, running a little ahead of time. Kathy?
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You want to?
I'm very glad to be here, I'm glad I made it. The roads, it's weird, when I left Fort Dodge, the roads weren't that bad, and as I came to town, I was kind of.
Doesn't look like it.
Well, I'll tell you a secret, Humboldt doesn't have a state plow, so we are serviced by Fort Dodge, Pocahontas, Algonon.
Oh, really?
So.
And I did kind of come to the back route, because I thought, well, it's a couple of interesting drives. I'm kind of the ones who can handle it. I came to the back route, but, so I'm Kathy Fisher, and I'm the new executive director at Midas Council of Governments. And so I've been coming around, visiting each of the boards and supervisors. Of course, the one I haven't scheduled yet is Fort Dodge, because that's, you know, too close to.
You got one last.
You guys are actually the second to last, because you have the second to last. I don't know why I did that, but I, all I wanted to do is just introduce myself. David's on our board here, and then just let you know that I guess what I'm working on with Midas is, well, we're working on a rebranding of the organization. We sit back or go back and analyze what we've been doing and to see if we can do it better, and make sure everyone's aware of what we're doing, or what we can do for them. We exist because the boards and supervisors of these six counties decided to create us. And so we're going to be looking at that sort of stuff. I just wanted to introduce myself and see if you've had any questions for me. Give you an opportunity, I know this isn't the moment, but I'm always available at all times if you guys ever have any concerns or questions, or anything that you need to be aware of.
Well, I'm curious, through our church, Rick, they talked about, and I'm assuming the bus routes. They said that for daycare, they've had some issues getting a bus to be there for, because the numbers aren't as, or Zion. They don't have as many kids, they aren't as many as they used to be. So they weren't able to guarantee that they'd be able to have the bus there.
Okay.
And I said, well, has anybody made a phone call to talk to them? Because that, you know, standing out by the corners, just looking at the bus, wondering why it's late, and they're only coming for a couple of kids, you know?
Right.
Maybe we need to talk to somebody, well, nobody knew that.
Um, so Jay, come up, how do you see it, was it camera, or? Is our transit manager, so he has been handling that? I didn't, this is the first I'm hearing of any of this, so.
Well, I'm, we just heard it last week. I was on, I'm on board for the church, and they were talking about the numbers of kids that, part of the reason that they thought their numbers were down for the preschool is because when parents are working and the kids have to go get on a bus to either take them to the center or to wherever, then somehow there was a miscommunication, they weren't be able to get his, so that was.
Okay, well, if that's something you want to, I can check with him.
Well, I'm, I'm going to go back and talk to them and say, you guys need to make a phone call, because I see buses driving around town, and it's not like they're standing room only on them, so I don't think that it's. That's the case, I, I think there just is an issue of, we need to make sure that they talk to them.
Well, if there's, I mean, again, if, if you go back and talk to them, and you want, if we need a meeting or whatever.
I'll, I'll get through somebody, through Dave.
Okay. Anything else, any? Well, again, I just wanted to introduce myself, and I don't know why the close ones are hard to get to. And of course, if it, uh.
I feel like you are close.
Right, exactly, that's why I was like, well, I wouldn't do much if an Iowa.
Well, they have a beautiful new facility here.
What's that?
I see they have a beautiful new facility here.
A new barn.
New bus barn.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I haven't, you know what, I still haven't been, I saw it, but I haven't been in it, so I need to get in there.
It's beautiful.
You know, that's kind of that word starting in the fall, because it takes the weather turns, and then I'm like, well, it's probably not a good time of the year to go for a long drive, so. I said I was going to hop on the buses and ride for a.
There you go, yeah.
If I ever had a day to just sit on a bus. So far, I haven't had one yet.
Right.
All right, well, I'll let you guys get on to that one, saying.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy, good work.
Appreciate it, drive careful on the way home.
You guys like me, too? Yes, I'll get back, back to work.
Yeah, we don't want to hold you up.
They're lighting enough out, I can see across.
Yeah, you're right, you do. But the wind is moving back. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're a little early to go into training, so. Let's move down, accept a place on file with the Second Judiciary, Judicial District Annual Program Report. Physical year eighteen nineteen.
That is just one of those things that we do, I'm on that board. They send this and to every county that's involved in the Second Judicial District, there's a report. And we just put it on file. There's been nothing contentious, you know, going to the board meetings, so I really have nothing to add other than it's a technicality legality.
I'll put a copy up here if you guys want to look through it.
Did I say that correctly?
You did.
I think that's just where we're at with it. But so I have nothing to add, being on that board, but there's nothing would be the fact that every county in that Second Judicial District needs to file.
We need to.
I make the motion to file.
I'll second it, too.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carry. May report.
All right, for me, past Monday, the second, had an LEC meeting that morning. And then Thursday, the fifth, I attended the Iowa Drainage District Association Annual Meeting at Fort Dodge. And that was a pretty decent meeting. That was my two official meetings last week.
I had the LEC meeting also on Monday, and also on Thursday, the IDDA meeting. I think they had pretty good attendance there.
It seemed like it.
Yeah.
There was a good attendance, and as far as those range meetings, pretty good information and.
Yeah.
Interesting, actually.
The only one I had was IDDA in Fort Dodge.
Okay, I had Wednesday, had a Midas meeting in Fort Dodge, and that was a good meeting. And Thursday, went up to Charles City to district meeting, and had a very good meeting up there. I've gone to get there, seemed like everything they were yelling about was the ambulance service. And from what I found out, if somebody calls an ambulance, they are not required by state law to go pick them up. That's a courtesy.
Really?
Yeah. You're not required, an ambulance service in Iowa is not required to respond to any emergency.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
So when you call, should please, will you come?
Yeah, tip. So there were six legislators up there, and we talked to them about it, and they were going to look into it a little farther and see about getting something changed, but, yeah, that's, that's a courtesy, that's not required. And a lot of counties have private ambulance service. I think it was Franklin County is going with Saragordo back up to the hospital.
Because that's a private one up there, right?
Um, I think that's, that's out of the hospital at, what is it, the hospital up there, Mercy?
Mercy.
Mason City?
Mason City, yeah. There was two counties that talked about requiring service or getting ambulance service from them. And that was the big topic up there, everybody stood up and gave a report for the county. And I thought, we didn't worry about it too much, because Humboldt Hospital took care of our ambulance service here, and they owned and operated it, the way I understand it. And Rennwick is the only one that's an entity that has it. And they may be coming wanting money, but most of the counties, they were trying to figure out what to do, because they've got private services, and unless you're an old crippled fellow with, a person with Medicare, they don't have to pick you up. Medicare pays pretty good, I guess, on an ambulance service, but your insurance is supposed to pay the other, but they're all struggling. That was the big thing up there, and otherwise, they give a report. I brought some of the counties back, if anybody wants to read through and work their business on.
One other thing I share with Dave, because he wasn't down at Fort Dodge, spoke with Burl Matthews. You know, he's the president of ISAC. And I mentioned to him that they should maybe look at training for drainage works, some educational stuff for drainage works at ISAC. So I was going to bring it up at their meeting coming up in two weeks. So I was gonna bring it up at their meeting coming up in two weeks or so. So, um, I thought that'd be good. So we'll, we'll see if they come up with something for drainage quirks. Because right now, they don't really have any unit, you know, everybody does it just a little different. And it'd be nice if they all could kinda get...
They don't, also really have a, like, auditors, of course, have your own schoolization and that. And it's all through ISAC. And you get... There is kind of, uh, there is no drainage quirks.
And then this, this is, that's gonna go away. It won't last forever.
Yeah, every place requires.
So we should have some good training for these people that are doing it. So, you know, everyone's gonna need training.
That was, yeah. I think he asked you that you should probably attend that meeting, too.
Maybe you've asked.
My, can I see your, your new cup?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We had a, had a new cup.
Got a new get a cup.
Which is, does work. And check it out.
I think that was a good idea though, that, yeah, I know Rick brought that up. That was a good idea.
Yeah, you know, I...
See what ISAC says anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Right County, they took their one cent sales tax, which Sunset come up on it. And they turned that over to the ambulance services countywide, sounded like. Something for thought whenever they're ready to come do again, but that's, some counties are talking about that, so.
Both at Fort Dodge, or Webster uses the Fort Dodge fire department paramedics? Or they're, they're now staffed down at the hospital? That's coming?
They, uh, use the paramedics and they also use the ambulance service out of training.
Sounds interesting.
Yeah, it was a very interesting meeting. Like I say, every county got up and said what was going on in the county. And of course, I didn't get anything wrote down, so I got it down on the back of one. I'm one of the other counties, okay, we doing this, this and this. And I gave my report and towards the end, like, the legislators was in there and they was all talking about this and that. And somebody asked them, well, one of them brought up the subject of mental health. And so they were arguing back and forth over this ambulance service and other stuff. And Sandy jumped up and she said, I got one question. If it ain't, how'd you put that? If it's broke, you fix it? And this sounds like it's broke, so why don't you change your tactic and work on it? That's all I got to say. She said, no. No, it was a very good meeting, but, uh, thanks for going. And it didn't snow.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. It was a pretty nice, it was a very nice day.
Beautiful day.
But the snow was a day or two late.
Yeah, that's about the typical day you'd head up there.
Okay, um, have you got, how many of us are signed up for that? Or have you got me signed up for both of them?
One, you got the...
Yeah, no. Let's see, this one's on, uh, I don't have the date on there.
I'll bet that has a date on it.
Well, this, they talked about the, this is the certification for Iowa supervisors. And you're gonna be certified now when you go to be a Iowa supervisor. You'll be certified and you'll have to attend so many classes and...
To keep your certification.
Stuff to keep your certification up. So that's why I brought that one back.
They're, they're still talking about it or they're...
They're still talking about it and they'll have more coming up here at meetings in January.
Great.
Very good break.
Well, there might be a few more. There's a class, there are, some of them are coming up the sixteen, uh, next month.
In Des Moines, at the embassy on, is that the thirtieth? The thirtieth, yeah.
Supervisor.
Stay with the governor and the legislators.
Iowa County, uh, ISAC University.
I'm going in on it.
Yeah, I signed up.
Yep.
I'm not going to...
If you have these... Um... We just drive on. I think Sandy and I are both going down.
That's what they deliver, hey?
I'll talk to them.
Pretend I'm talking to them.
Okay.
That's a one day one, or no, that was two day, that was fifteen, sixteen.
Yep. Okay, I'll try and get you some rooms too.
I would go down on that one.
Was anybody else planning on going to ISAC University? That's January sixteenth.
That one looks really interesting.
I went to it last year, it was very good.
You think this is, did you, you, is it, you think this is gonna be somewhere? It looked like they changed it up a little bit.
I, I think, I think it's, I think it's good. I was signed up for it.
Yeah.
The ISAC University is different than the statewide supervisor meeting.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I...
Lot of meetings coming up.
Yes, sir. I am taking a really hard look at that one. I don't have a, don't have an exact date, but it will be early March for the weed commissioners conference. And that's a two day conference that I'd like to attend because it's very educational. So thinking, uh, potentially going to the ISAC University, but I don't know if I'd be able to make it to the spring conference.
I thought there was another one down there, a one day deal, is that the thirtieth?
Thirtieth, that's the embassy.
And I already have Eric and Sandy that replied, if you, okay, that one's for you.
Yes, I will.
I did last night.
You did last night?
Yeah.
I will.
Okay.
I won't be able to attend that.
Okay. I'm gonna add Dave then.
That's on the thirtieth.
Bruce, that one.
Remember last year, it was so darn cold.
A one day one.
Yeah. I went to the league, put my window down to get my parking ticket. My window didn't wanna go back up.
If you're wanting to have...
Two hours.
I'm at home with windows there.
Drive down early in the morning, you probably know that too.
Yeah, push down.
Okay.
Be glad of you, Larry.
Will you?
Um, Bruce, you too, if you decide that you want a room the night before for the statewide supervisor meeting, so you don't have to drive down the morning, you need to let me know so I can help you serve for you.
I think it starts about nine o'clock.
Yeah, and I think...
Well, nine o'clock, that's like...
He's, you're half done by then. Yeah, you're half done by then.
Registration's at eight and then the welcoming's at nine.
That one last night, at the embassy suite.
Yes.
And I can run a copy to you.
Blue cup, medium.
That's good.
A couple years ago, it's got long.
Yeah, I got pictures to prove it.
I got a picture of Bruce and Chuck.
Come see him there last week and went out of here.
I was busy that night, otherwise I would've went and harassed him one more time.
We should've had some Iowa State people there when they had a bigger crowd.
That's a problem, Dave.
Well, next year, we'll get somebody from Iowa State and see who...
See how that goes.
Yeah, there we go.
Oh, I'm, I'm guessing we could probably get, I don't know, Kevin Dresser or someone.
Oh, I'm sure.
Am I okay to give, to ask a few things of stuff I have here?
Yes.
Sure.
Um, I've got Rick signed up for the IGHCP meeting, which is coming up February thirteenth and fourteenth. This is our roof help. Um, if anyone else is going, you need to let me know so I can get you reservations. So, so far, it's just Rick and I, I signed myself up, but...
Thank you.
Is Chris Fender, doesn't she?
She probably will, but, yeah, she's gone today, so I couldn't talk to her about it.
I think it's good for her to go.
Yeah, mhm, I think she learns a lot too. Website is coming along really well and waiting back for some answers from solutions on, um, they needed some background information for things to be able to transfer everything over, make it live. So after that, it'll be, um, after I get all the information, get it to them. It'll take about a weekend and we're...
We'll be ready to pull the switch.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So we're getting pretty excited. We're really, really close.
Good.
That's that, for me.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to go to drainage then.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion, our favor?
I, I, so this, I had Grant print off a copy too, just I figured you need one. He gave me this copy, right, and I signed it. So we're good to go on the supervisors.
Use that in all sets.
Check the date on the ISAC University. I think we've got a couple days yet before we gotta sign up.
Yeah, I think so.
Are they all going out there?
The Dozer's still there.
That's what I wondered. So the last crew, you said, was a good...
If you could get that crew out higher than that.
It's good to hear. So did the update his machine or was it the same machine or?
It was a different machine, it was, uh, it had GPS on it, so they just set the grade in the thing and the line that they're supposed to be on and it'll only go down to that depth and...
Wow.
So made it pretty good. And the guy running it, they've all been good at running them, you know, as far as laying the pipe. They've all done a good job. But this one, the other two guys, that one was pretty green. I mean, just young kid, I think he was at high school. And he was really good.
There he is.
Yeah. Giving him instructions and helping him.
Twice a lesson a week.
So did they get most of the leveling and stuff done or is it...
Well, to me, it looks like they didn't.
Well, that's what I wondered.
That's my opinion. If, if they don't get it done, it's nothing that I can handle.
He's taking me to pass it on.
Better than me if they don't. And in some cases, we have had the farmer use a box scraper going and level up. And then, you know, it just gets tacked onto the building, you know? Just keeps on my ground going, I keep considering, I'll be in the university and I'll have it coming around.
I was gonna say that way, you don't have anybody to blame?
Yep. So, and I get up there to the building and it doesn't matter.
Okay, ED number eighty-eight, expectation for improvement.
This back page here?
Front, middle one.
Got a map there. Just up the town, Mark Davis talked about it three, four times about this.
I was getting, right, on C forty-nine?
Yes.
Across from C forty-nine, towards the guys park road.
Yeah, in between there. And he wants to evaluate it. He says that there's a lot more water that comes, acres that comes from the south. I don't know, he says that because of, um, you know, like...
There's supposed to be a culvert under the South Road, um, so it's right here.
Here, so we should, um, check this out.
So if the south from the south, he must be meaning some of the acres in here, but...
Well, that's what I wondered. Some border line from Webster? It isn't, is it?
I mean, there is those district tractors, but I would think a lot of that land back in here was all off to the river.
I think he's thinking actually here, from one, one eighty-four.
Oh, he's thinking from...
It comes from the south across the fence line, because there's no fence line anymore.
Oh.
But I, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be a hard one if you're thinking you're gonna change district lines. Oh, yeah, I didn't, yeah, after talking to him, we ran a quick watershed with Liddar. Oh, did you? Yeah, and we're not sure if it's gonna add any. Okay. And I told him that, but we'll do some more investigations of the culverts and decide, but... Our, our, we ran the boundary with the Liddar and it's very close to the original boundary. Just very few irregularities. We'll see.
Well, that pretty much says you're not gonna annex a bunch of land into it.
No, if it's any, it looks to me like it won't be much.
What's the, I don't know, it's a very small district.
Not very big either. Eight inch, ten inch, fifteen.
Yes.
We're looking at the position right now, do you wanna make a statement or anything?
My, my yields down there were, for the last five years, the lowest I got was two nineteen. One thirty-seven this year. Just too wet. I gotta do, but it's the water oozing through the soil that's causing my wetness down there. All my farms are too wet this year. I've got good major drainage, you know, the main tiles, but I gotta get latels put in. Several of you guys have, three or four of you guys with the drainage meeting. And I didn't realize how water table affects my nitrogen conversion. This fall, when I drive out into some of the fields north, puddles.
So which way does this, does this run back towards?
Flows north.
Flows to the river? So did it dump, did it dump up there by that ravine? That's what I wondered.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Scott Becker called me last week and his landlord said that they'd be interested in doing something.
So is the old main in good shape? So you're talking about just adding another main?
It's a shame to throw it away.
That's about that, I mean, I, you have to...
Just pull away beside it and increase the, maybe bring a two footer up from the ravine up to the road. It takes forever for that water to get out of my property. It runs over the road there, had to close the road.
Yeah.
Few years. Probably two footer up there and dumped the stuff.
Where does, where does this corner over here, that, over here on the highway, that is always wet? Upper across from Stockdale?
Well, I was talking to Rick about many including them.
Well, I know, but what I'm wondering is, is would, if you put something like that in, would they wanna?
Would you ask for that?
I think what he's...
There's a very good chance they'd add it here.
Because that thing, I'll bet you seven out of ten years is that corner...
I've looked at the elevation and don't know whether it's lower than where the tile would be or not. There's a little hump in between that, where they're wet and then going through freshest ground. You'd almost have to do a topo map to figure out whether it's working or not. And then there's a lot of ground south of me that's not in the drainage district. That flows, you know, the elevation, the surface drainage is tremendous. Comes down through my ravines, that's why I'm so wet. And I asked Rick if we could add them into the...
And we, we did some lighter work just real quickly. And there's nothing obvious there as far as extra ground, but we look at, we look at surface drainage.
Where's my south fence line?
I'm not sure, here's the gravel.
That's also a farm that's got on now.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause this, no, no, they're still...
Is there, just the Benz site?
Yeah, there's just Benz there.
See, the drainage district, I'm gonna go that way.
Yeah, that's here, I guess, just that side.
Yeah, they took the house.
That, that's not the main district.
Yeah.
Yeah. The gray line is.
I don't know if they'd buy it with any of these landowners.
Well, the dreaded hog site, the nowhere, so...
It's up in there, yeah. That's where it was there.
Here's, here's my south fence line, right? Where's C forty-nine, right here?
We're talking in here.
So there's my south fence line.
Well, and I think in the district, we're gonna be, we're picking that out with the big grader from last year. Probably a little bit further than that, yeah.
And then it's gonna go from there.
The other issue is, is that one is getting rid of the road there. They've got fifteen or sixteen inch tile underneath the road. It just takes forever to fill.
Yeah, that, that is in the tenure or the five year plan to put bigger pipes under the road and possibly even raising the roads on it. Because the road sometimes goes under.
Scott Becker's not gonna like me dumping five acres of water into his field.
Yeah, but that's the way the water flows, that's the way it flows.
Well, maybe if we could combine that with a bigger tile in that, was it eighty-eight?
Yeah, so you're talking, you're gonna put a, you know, that's...
Yeah, so you're talking here, you're gonna put a, you know, that's in, I think it's in the five-year plan to put a bigger pipe through that road, and then before we resurface that road again, we might be doing some work to it, just to marry the elevation.
Somebody called me, and I told the engineer he's fucking to put the dirt up on right. He wants to make the ditches bigger.
Yeah.
But in order to do this, you gotta get rid of the water, when it gets down in that low ground, the tile's just right there. You'd have, probably have to lower the new tile.
Typically, new projects, the tiles get a lot deeper because of the size of the pipe and the ability to lay it a little more accurate.
Absolutely. I'd like to move ahead and see if the neighbors would be willing to do that.
That would be part of the report.
Well, that's what the petition's all about, correct? I mean, you're gonna start something.
Yeah, yeah, and I can't see any reason not to accept this petition.
To take a look at it, well, I mean...
The only thing I'd recommend is, if we are thinking about annexing acres, we do that before we approve a project.
I was gonna say that.
Because of the, the thing they talked about at the, at the DDA, they, they went ahead and did the project, and then tried to put them in.
Then tried to chase them.
And they won, won the case, that said they should have been contacted before and had said...
Oh, yeah, and that's what we've done recently, 'cause it's just property, I think.
Yes.
And everybody who should have a stay does.
Right, that, exactly. We're, we're fine with that part of it.
Oh, yeah.
If there is any, and it doesn't look like there'd be much, what are we petitioning for here?
What's up the petition and hire an engineer, I guess, what would be?
What's the petition, is for tile improvement?
Well, my question is, and I think Rick asked, or Bruce, or everybody, are we, are we putting any new tile and leaving the old one?
Well, unlikely, that'd be part of the, the report.
That's the report, we'll make a recommendation on that. Basically, if we accept this petition, we appoint an engineer to do the project.
They'll give you the overall, what age, what's...
And if any lands need to be annexed.
Right, all the stuff, but, and the question was, does this is a functioning system, potentially undersized?
Yeah. Yeah, the petition says an increased main tile size.
But, yeah.
Evaluate the drainage district watershed and increase main tile size.
Yeah.
And probably don't wanna tear up the whole tile.
That's what I'm saying.
Is it decent shape? No, we just parallel it.
Like it is, uh, as he showed us.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, learning from what we did out of dials, when they tried to run the pipe next to it and then break, or, there was so much groundwater that it was backing up, and it was a mess.
Yeah.
Well, if you start at the bottom end first, and let it run out, well, you dig into the water, not towards the outlet. So, it's always releasing water every day.
Yeah, that's what, that's what...
That didn't work out. That was a crushing place, and it did not work.
Yeah, that's right. And, well, it, it works on the dry here, but it don't work in...
No. And out there, I think if you sit on the ground, it was raising the water.
Yeah. All right.
Do we need a motion then?
As a landowner, do you have anybody you prefer to have as engineers? That's my question.
Worked with Rick for four years now, he's...
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the petition and appoint Westergaard, Jakeson and Westergaard as engineers on the project.
I have a second.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Hello? Gary.
Will you have this done next week?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just, I thought I'd throw it out there.
He's not an artist, right?
Yeah, now you can tell us the truth. One thing about it, it's not a very big district.
No, no. He's not like, and, and we've got the LIDAR downloading already.
And the depth of this probably isn't very deep.
No.
It's not, he's gonna be going through twenty-foot hills.
Final design would be in the spring, when we can dig this tile up and find exactly where it is and the size and condition. But we can get through the report, have the hearing this winter, to know where to go forward.
You can do all the LIDAR work on it, see if there's any lands that need to be annexed, and have that done prior.
Yes.
We could have a hearing on moving forward prior to spring, you're saying?
Yes, by all means.
I did get a call from Scott Becker, and he said his landlords, who is the Fris estate or whatever, is in North Fris. He said they gave him permission to spend some money getting, he uses a lot of ground, just pockets of four or five acres up above the hill above me. They'd like to do something.
Just giving them out there.
I'll call Scott to the, to talk to him. A lot of this is political.
Oh, political, strange, what do you think? Remember, if all the landowners saw, they'd have to say, it's not the tenant. Obviously, this gets passed, sent to the landowners and all of the business of getting this sent out.
The tenant is the one that has to talk them into it.
Yep, they can talk, but it's a landowner's decision.
Well...
Gotta start something.
No, I can start it, is to do the petition, we can't go out and solicit it.
Nope.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Okay. Now, let's take care of DDA thirty-five.
This is a minimum pay estimate, this is basically, the element, and it doesn't include that there's been a request for a change order on, on several things that were added, and I haven't even had a chance to review it, but I brought copies if you want, and so I can give them to you ahead of time. I don't wanna give one to Dial to. Big thing is, on here, there's no more stockpile materials, those have all been used. Without the change order, you can see the total project there at the lower right, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. And then the line below it is a retainage. With the approval of this pay estimate, you have a retainage of seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. So, you've got some leverage on the contract. I guess I'd be interested in anything Dial has to say, I understand there may be some leveling to do yet.
Well, I don't know if Jordan's been there, I was gone last week when they were out, Monday and Tuesday, I think he called, and we had a few questions, and, but I was around, and I did drive it here. Anyway, I drove it, it's too slow here. It looked like there's still need to do some, in my opinion. It's not, not big, it's not like, if they don't do any more, I can't take care of it, I'll just get a, run a scraper from Gary and move it.
Doug, do you know if they went down on the south end, uh, that field of John Norman's? Did they go down and fix that suck hole down there?
They dug that up, it turns out it was just an exploratory hole that was dug looking for pipe.
Well, John wasn't sure if it was that, or if it was over in that area, where, he said it looked to him more as more where the old main was, and didn't know if they'd disturbed that. I drove out there and looked into the field, and the dirt was, it was kinda like, there wasn't this much snow, but there was some snow on it. So, I assumed it was, the dirt was rustled up, and, but I didn't know he was out there.
I don't know anything about it. They got pictures and things of it.
You're saying it was, uh, nothing?
Nothing, no tile there at all.
You had potentially something they dug up, didn't find anything, and it just settled, wouldn't it?
Yes.
All right. John just said, when I talked to him, that when they were combined, there was this hole that, I wasn't sure if it was a suck hole, or...
He got it marked for us, so we could all see easily where it was.
Awesome.
What about the concern on, uh, any siliation into the ditch?
I, that, I believe, what I'd like to see done is, is, uh, there's a couple beaver dams that should come out, too. Meyer, what's his?
Brandon.
Brandon, is to get somebody in there with a long reach, uh, to reach that. It won't take them long at all, but there's beaver dams, too, to remove, and just take care of all that at once.
Are you talking to Beaver Dam on the east side of the highway, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's one on the east side and one on the...
Yeah, the one on the east side, going...
You could see the one from the east side from the highway.
I didn't even look, I should've...
It's like a four-plex. They've only got water about three or four foot deep over there, there's just a couple young ones away. They don't have it backed up quite a ways yet.
They're ambitious, I can't believe it.
I think Doug Marso has a work order for the Beaver Dam thing, and something else that was up in it.
Yeah, and I'm a little concerned on that with cross, I wanted him to adjust the intake so that, the intake that takes the surface water draining from the north at the corner where the thirty-five turns there. The inlet end of that is really low, and it, it's, through the years, it's washed dirt out down that low. I think it should be raised, I think the work order probably includes that with Marso. Raise the inlet side of that box inlet, and then fill in some dirt behind it, so it doesn't slope so bad. Right now, it slopes down to the ditch severely, just natural conditions. They put some hog slats down below there, sometimes somebody did, trying to stop some of that, but...
Slow down some of the erosion.
Yeah.
Are you, you're talking on the, where this thing goes into the ditch?
Yes, yes.
I took some pictures of that, 'cause I wondered the same thing, that it looks like it's chewed that out pretty good there.
Yeah. Months ago, I actually met with Doug Marso out there and looked at what could be done. Since then, I've just become more concerned on the, what kind of cost that might be, I guess.
Well, let's play that again, is this an existing structure, or is this the final outlet itself?
Existing structure.
Existing structure, that, so didn't...
This had nothing to do with...
Had nothing to do with the project. My original question was, any siliation from when the tile of last year, when we got that rain and it washed into the tile, and then cleaned it out, and it eventually worked its way into the ditch? If there's any concern there?
Some concern, I guess, I, I'm, I was hoping rather than try and get the contractor to rent a long reach for an hour of work or whatever, that we just get somebody else in there.
They will pay for it.
I...
I haven't got that yet.
I asked John, and Dial, you might have, I said, what are your thoughts on that? And he said, the way that pipe was running, he said, I, he can't believe that there'd be much dirt in there.
I can't believe there'd be much of a whole lot either, I mean, it's...
Not in it, not in it, but, you know, it's all into the ditch.
Into the ditch.
Into the ditch, not into, not though. I agree with the...
Well, there isn't a whole lot on the end, I mean, you, I, I find the damn things, I've been out and looked at it, half a hundred times.
I know, we talked about it, between that and the hole, and, 'cause my take on it is, they're probably contractor-wise, are...
That's the outlet, right?
Probably considering themselves pretty well-done.
There's, I mean, it's all ground, you can't see that there isn't any pressure.
It relates back to them, including dials leveling. And if it's, because they didn't do it, but they still pay for it, correct?
Right, and that thing's still in four or five years.
Or if they have to pay Dial for renting a box scraper, 'cause we ran into this a year ago, when they, you know, this is a two-year project. This, this spring, there was a field that it wasn't leveled right, and it was John Norman's ground that he farms, he had to take care of the leveling.
Up along the fence?
Well, and in through the field where the pile...
I know.
Now, that was more from excessive rain.
No, this was actually in, well, that part was, but the other part was, just the leveling of the tile area was not very good. So, that's my question and concern with Dial, seeing that it's not probably real good as we speak, probably something at this point in time isn't gonna work very well until spring, and who's gonna stand the cost of Dial or anyone else going out there with a box scraper and doing it?
Here's what comes to mind for me, I guess, is, um, looking at a completion hearing, but getting an estimate from Dial for his work, and an estimate for cleaning the stuff out of the ditch, and withholding that from the contract.
There you go, there.
It's not gonna be a lot of dollars, I, Dial's been very reasonable about everything.
Yeah, and I'm sure King will look at that and think...
Yeah, but you, you heard what he said earlier, for every dollar that gets billed, he's paying thirty cents of the, the dollar back towards the...
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, it's one or the other, you're either gonna go rent a box scraper and make it right, or he's gonna bill himself to...
Yeah, I understand, we're in the same district.
I just don't think that there's a whole lot of dirt down there at the bottom side that I haven't seen.
Yeah, it, it, I've looked at it here a month ago or so, and, yeah.
That, that concern came from another landowner in this district, that, if there was any.
Okay. When do you project a completion hearing on, and when would we do it assessed?
Uh, probably, I have a request for a change order, so we've gotta evaluate that and get something to you, uh, within a couple weeks, maybe. And then, at that time, they could probably, I will get some direction from the board as far as approval on the change order, then we'll have to do a final pay estimate, uh, two of maxi, the final covering the change orders, and then a final for, uh, getting you then the, the change.
So, this change order here for thirty-one thousand...
That's not a change order.
No, that's a pay estimate.
This is just a pay estimate.
Or this is a pay estimate, so then the change order would be, and then you're talking that would still leave us with seventy thousand roughly?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then hopefully get that done, do, do you think we're gonna have it done before the end of the year?
Uh, I mean, we can, as, it depends on approval of the change order.
Well, let's push hard on it, so we can get it out.
The next question, yes, that's the bottom one.
Sure.
If Dial's concerned...
I mean, it doesn't matter if it's at the end of the year.
No, it's gotta be...
Just before March, February.
Yeah.
So, I have...
How long is before the end of January?
The rest of it, the paperwork for a must for a pay estimate is just the retainage. I can redline one in three minutes, and Julie can do it in five.
And typically, don't you hold the retainage until the completion hearing?
Yes.
Right.
Thirty days after.
After, actually, so, yeah, thirty days after by code. And, and that's when your, when your warranty begins.
Right, yes.
So, by the same token, there, I mean, most of the tile, other than the stuff they brought up this summer, hell, it was paid a year ago, because that's when it was...
That's right.
The biggest majority of the tile was a year ago.
The big stuff was a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but they're the ones that the, it's like the meter's still running.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I can only understand that they're anxious to...
Well, and you're, you're talking, it's over seven hundred thousand dollar project.
Right.
Well, I can, I can, I can review this and have a change order to you, uh, for next week.
Yeah.
And I can have the...
Let's do it.
Keep it moving. And have the final pay estimate showing the retainage is paid.
Does that work, Dial?
Yeah, to me, that, I'd really like to have an assessment done more, so we don't have interest that we'll keep going.
We all do, but there's no reason we won't have it.
No, no.
No.
Maybe not perfect.
Sure, it's perfect.
Well, we haven't drawn anything yet, so we're still...
I'm just thinking things.
Well, that's the consensus.
What is it, twenty days? For completion hearing?
I think it's only ten.
Is it ten?
And you only have to invite the ones that you go through.
Okay.
So, that's a lot shorter than just...
So, it'll be quick.
Before the project was done. That's only about three people, so...
Yeah, I guess they have a short list.
Soon as they did that, I'd...
But we have to get this done.
Oh, absolutely.
We have to.
We may just finish the leveling, and we get the pay estimate, and we'll do the, prepare the change order, yeah, we'll have it all for you next week.
'Cause otherwise, that's, we're gonna get into this sub-five-eleven, and redo, and then special levy, and we don't want that, there's no reason for it.
No.
That was part of the completion, when it was, which they did get done, so that it could be finished up now.
Yes.
By the March level.
So, on this change order, Rick, all these things are, I mean, you're good with everything that they did, everything was up to...
Yes, yes, the quantities here, you see, for this period, those were all, we, we kept track of all that, um, yeah, this, this gets them, the quantities as installed. The only thing to deal with is the, and I, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, pay the estimate number eight to the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven ninety-five.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Gary?
So, one thing I'd like to ask you, I bought some tile from to put in, and we did, built your pieces, or whatever, and, who paid that, did King pay me, or...
Typically, but, um, I'll have to ask Jordan, just where that, what happened with that.
Okay.
But you bought the tile for...
Yeah, because they were right there and rubbed them...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have an account, so I went and got the tile for them and they didn't have to come back. It was a few days, but then we did them and stuff.
This... This is for...is this...this is for them for eighty-five, seventy-four? What is that?
You have this...
For thirty-five?
Branch C.
I'm just asking, what is it? Part of the original or is it...? This isn't over and above, right?
I do not know.
All right. Rick, on this thirty-five branch C improvement, is this...I'm supposed to sign this for payment? I guess I'm just questioning. It says on your principal engineering technician office. Is this just...
Probably just administration closing that one out.
All right. Well, rather than...I mean, just the other ones are only a couple hundred dollars. I don't have a problem with that with eight grand. I'm going to ask you about it.
Sure. Yeah, I had a person to have on this.
Question.
Administration, pay estimates and inspection. This included some time to be out there doing inspection yet. Yeah, it's...the time is for inspection, our tech three.
A lot of time, a lot of time.
But my question is, is that that's over and above the original, right?
You probably haven't been billed for this, these hours previously.
Okay.
No, I wouldn't be thinking that, but I guess what you're thinking is over the estimated cost.
The estimated cost was if it was five thousand dollars or ten thou...whatever that number was. I'm just asking, is that over and above the...what the estimate was?
It was just part of the estimate.
Is that part of the estimate?
I would say that would be above.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all I ask. I don't...there's no explanation, so I was just curious.
Yeah, and we described it in the...in the...through the middle of that.
Yep.
The one thing I would...I'd really like to thank for a few years ago you let us pay half in advance. Yeah, seal. I think that was the first time you've done that and I really appreciate it because I'm sure that it's...a lot of interest on this project. It's lots of interest.
Well, we don't say it more because this is going to be done for the March levy.
Yes.
I'm really...
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
I would like to tell you thank you for all the times that you text us and kept us informed.
Yeah, keeping us informed.
Because we weren't out there every day and I'm sure...well, it doesn't look like you lost a lot of hair, but... Everybody was pulling their hair out thinking, "Where the hell are they?" I mean, and I know it's been a long haul.
Well, in the end, you know, this is a project that's been last one-hundred-and-fifty years.
Yeah.
And as far as laying the pipe, I think they did a pretty darn good job. It was cool last fall. It's been better on a fly roll. This one, this one...
Your head.
Yeah, that's true. Really, it's true.
Well, I just...the picture that you sent the day that it was done was like... Because I was so tired of getting the phone...or somebody calling, "Oh, my God, they're going to be mad again." And they're calling, they're...it's like nobody's working. Okay. I think the secretary just got tired of me calling down there because it's like, "Holy cow, well, he's not in." I know he's in, but it's done, so...
Dial was very good working with the contractor, also helping him out when he could and yeah.
We appreciate it.
He did his efforts too, very much.
All right. Different topic.
Okay.
Here, I think, was this last weekend, so I got a personal tour of a lot of drainage ditches walking up. And I was looking up here on DD eighteen, you know, we're doing FEMA work, cleaning here and cleaning there. Is there a...I'm a little concerned about we're doing this cleaning work and the ground is so saturated yet after they clean that, it's starting to slide back in already. Is there a FEMA work? Is there a deadline that has to be completed by?
No, within reasonable time, but I just have to file for extensions.
Oh.
Um, and they understand that because we have a short window for repairs.
Yeah, areas are particularly bad. What we've done in the past is put in some perforated tile a little ways from the ditch and pick up the groundwater so it doesn't seep through the side of the...
Yeah, that'd cost a fortune because there's a lot of it.
And that's something we need to talk to, um, probably Phil Jacobs because it might be a hazard mitigation situation where you have to add stabilization to keep it there.
Yeah, because I mean, it's not the upper bank that's sliding on. It's the lower six, eight feet up. You can just see the waters coming through the bank and then it just, you know, it starts to slide back into the bottom.
Yeah, it's been a very bad problem in many counties for the last couple of years.
It's so darn wet.
You're...
And our Prairie Creek, you know, that's town that all the Beaver Dam's in it?
Yes.
Well, I didn't see the Beaver Dam's because they're about this far underwater.
That's good.
The water is so deep up in there, it's just incredible.
A lot of water's pouring down that darn Prairie Creek now.
Yeah.
So, same way with DD eighteen, it was like a, you know, it's...
Full of water.
Full of water. And God, there's water.
This time of year, it's amazing.
So, I didn't know if we could slow down on some of this FEMA repair and let the ground like...
You're kind of saying, "No, it's a FEMA repair and it's a slumping. Maybe wait."
Yeah.
Or either drive it out so that when they do it, it doesn't slide back in like you saw?
Yeah. I didn't know if it had to be done in a year or five years or...
It's going to be another couple of years and then twenty-twenty-five, we're going to be in a drought for a couple of years.
I didn't know. I pray for the drought next year, twenty-twenty, but... The problem on that eighteen, as we had the discussion with the contractor, they want to keep moving along and it does include those areas.
Yeah.
You know, do they not do it? Do they come back to it?
Well, if they don't do it, it ain't going to drain because it's a problem.
It's part of the cleaning and it's going to be in those areas, so...
Yeah, I think we just got to muddle through the next few years and if we have to go back and touch them up, we'll have to go back and touch them up.
And it may or may not increase the FEMA money at that point because it might have been submitted.
Well, we've been noticing the last few years too, some of these kind of heal themselves. The grass gets established again after it's slipped off and the current takes out some of the very bottom that came into the ditch.
Oh, yeah.
Couple of years down the road, they're a lot better than they were when you first look at them, but...
Yeah.
As long as it's not too severe and blocking things.
Well, when you're out there this spring in your boat, can you take grass seed or seed with you and sprinkle that along the dock?
It's just amazing. When they clean it, the water is just...
Comes right through the bank.
Yeah. And I wouldn't rule out some of this tiling work because they could just, uh, transplant or pull in some four-inch pipe and use a small outlet and we've found some severe areas that that was the only answer we could come up with, so...
I will say that it probably is sound practice. Four inches might not be big enough, but something to collect the water before the ditch.
Yeah, before the eases, you know.
And outlet it as a...it'd be a miniature tile system.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, like everybody did it. I mean, man, how many miles of...I mean, and I know it's not every mile.
Right.
Certain areas and probably if you run into that, there...it's because of the enormous groundwater table.
And it's probably slipped through the cracks a little, but we did some of that on one of your projects. I think it was down by Thor where we ended up putting some tile in with an outlet to stop a major slip-off, so...
I have a suggestion for you. If you go down that path...
Yep.
Uh, see if there isn't a potential way to...that is very similar to a saturated buffer.
Yes.
And there is cost share money for saturated buffers for nutrient reduction. And I know that's a tile and it's...I know this is two different programs, but if there's any way to incorporate said... because you're doing something similar. I know it's...I know a lot of, you know, about the saturated buffer thing, but if there's any way to do it, what I'm saying is a cost share would be available.
It's worth the call.
If you happen to have a tile and you happen to do this and it helps the saturated buffer and it's also keeping the bank from slipping off, that'd be wonderful if you can ever incorporate the two.
It's worth the conversation.
And not every place is going to be that way. Some of these you run across, you just do it because it's so much. It just is always going to keep slipping off.
Yes.
Just don't...
Worth the conversation, definitely.
Lot of water. You pray for the drought next year.
Yeah.
I'm trying to pull what you pray for.
Yeah, because it's always an extreme.
Maybe just a...
I'm going to pray big and hopefully just have a reduction in water and some more heat units.
Thank you most, brother D.
Second. Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Back into the conversation.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Dial.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping an eye on those characters out there.
Thanks for coming.
Give me five. Did you guys get this for...
Yes. Oh, I didn't mention that.
For all states.
Yeah.
Oh, that? Which one you got, Rick?
This is for Humboldt County employees. You want to do a flag?
No, it's an ASC. Well, yeah, the ASC.
Like an Aflac insurance policy, if you want to.
That's it. What about one? No, I think this one's not that one. No, this is for your whole state, your ASC.
No, I did not do that one.
You want to? You can do mine.
No, I can do it.
That's Aflac insurance.
You know, C forty-nine is on one-sixty-nine. If you turn and go...
He's...
Right there, right along the... Black top one to the garden part.
Here's one-sixty-nine.
Yeah. Okay, it's right down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was actually there.
Okay.
So, he's talking about maybe some...might be some more lands to the south.
Possibly.
South west.
Yeah. Well, it's probably a little bit. I don't think it's going to be very much. It's not a real thing. No, no, no. Very small, so...
Why does my stuff keep getting thrown at me? No, I don't want to. Pick your hands up either. There's still Mako numbers if you want to. That's what that's about.
I don't got this, okay?
There you go. Probably from Rick, I'm sure. No. Expect money hours.
There you go.
I was seeing social community. I said...
Thank you, Rick.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks.
I said access happy holidays. I hope that was the rest of our Christmas cards.
I just wrote it on the...
Well, you were throwing it at me, okay?
Come to me, but I'll share it. That's a new recipe I got off the bed. Crocker's may not like them.
I'm going to try it and tell you.
Well, Dave, I've been around sixty years and there's been a whole lot of baking products that I looked at and said, "Boy, I don't think I'd ever eat that again." But you're asking, that's my biggest problem.
I ate it. Two sessions last night. I went home, mixed it all up and baked it.
Yeah.
Cooling down.
Good things.
Try one. They might be good.
This is saying it's special.
Did you try one after you got done?
Yeah, I guess.
They're not too bad, Dave.
I got the biggest kick out of your picture with my nie...or my nephew's...
Oh, yeah.
The twins. She...
I asked Lori if I could use this.
Oh, my God. Olive, she was just almost scared to death today. Did you see the picture? Oh, it's Joey and Katie's twins.
Oh, yeah.
And Trip, he was sitting there like big boy and Olive looked at him and she was just sobbing.
Are you ready for me?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think we are.
Outside.
I better get a little water handy in case I got a tickle in my throat occasionally that... Anyway, um, we've always had this.
Have a bar.
Oh, no, thanks. I better. But very well.
Well, I'm going to eat this just to say I'm...
Good one, Dave.
Are they raisins?
No.
No, pecan. Coconut, pecan bars.
Oh, God.
Many good recipes.
Really? Ugh. Anyway, um, we've had Beacon for several years, you know. Do you guys ever get on and use it?
Yeah.
I try.
Um, you know, we have Picometry. Picometry is the map that lays underneath this other program. That's our base map. Um, and then we have, um... Um, Beacon that you can get online and you can put it on your phones too. Um, and like if you're driving around and see something you want some information on, you just plonk it in and swip it up.
I was going to mention this today. Beans, I know you're doing it. Uh, I need to get reconnected on the Picometry. Because I was using that and I hadn't used it, looked at anything for a while and now everything I need to get reconnected. So, you may have to help with that.
Okay.
Because I was using that with the phone and...
Yeah.
In an area and you wanted to see something and it was working just fine, but now I lost, you know, you got to re-enroll, re-sign up, whatever. Yeah, so I might need a little assistance one day because I was using that.
Now, this one you don't have to sign in on.
On Beacon.
Correct. You just go to Beacon, um, go to Iowa and Humboldt County and then it brings this up. And I usually shut off. Here's our layers over here. Um, that's on the map. Uh, we have the labels, railroad right-of-way, road, um, lot lines, corporate limits. You know, if you turn these off and on, it'll change what you're looking at.
Oh, okay.
Like land use. We use land use in our ag land calculations, so that's on there. Um, let's see, school districts. Are they...they're okay now, I think, aren't they? They're on here. Uh, we have soils. You can, um...
Eddie's not sure about school district.
I haven't looked at soil, so I don't know if they're okay now or not. Um, if you turn everything off, like township, then you just get this map and if you turn on soils, sometimes it takes a...let's see, let's, um, get a... I wanted to get a parcel here. And it would show you the soils in it. Hopefully. Yeah.
Well, it does.
See, there's your soils. And I think if you go up here to Legend, it might tell you what they are. Now, it's probably Greek to most people there, but anyway, shows your layer...your soils. Um, BLL, that's buildings on leased land, land of another. Um, oh, like a... Well, I think we got yours, twenty years, don't we, Eric? Is it BLL? Is it on some of your shed or something?
Probably.
Anyway, it'll bring those up. Um, I don't see in this area. Uh, tub divisions, building sites, mineral rights. We have mineral rights that we assess in Humboldt County. Um, drainage tiles, drainage districts.
How's that work? It's not laughing, man. Can you actually pull it up and be pretty good with the tiles and the districts?
Oh, yeah. I think so. See, there's your...
Yeah, so's your bodies.
Mm-hmm. Um, let's see, the tiles. We'll see what that looks like. I don't get into this very often, but... There's your tiles.
Okay.
And this is all...
Oh, that would be nice.
This is all, um, public information that anybody from the public can get on and look at this information. Um...
That ditch they're cleaning on is just two miles west of there.
You want to see it?
Oh, you saw the road ditch.
The road ditch.
Oh, okay.
So, this is something Mr. Anderson could use, so he was wanting copies of drainage maps on our new website, but he could go out here and see them right now.
Yes, yes. And I'm sure we have a disclaimer on here, you know, we're not perfect. You know, something isn't absolutely perfect, you know, so we won't be liable for that, but, um, but that's kinda nice, it's.
Peggy, can I, as you've been working through this new website, rather than reinvent the wheel, wouldn't there be something on there that you could say, if you're looking for this?
Link us, yeah.
Link it to the Beacon site?
I think Clint already has that on her page, but we could add.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Yeah, just so people can find it and get to what we're looking at here, and that. Then, there's no reason to have that there, here's a link to where you, what you wanna look at.
There's the whole county. Um, anyway, the thing that we added was this thing called the assessment layers. And I will go into, you can, um, you got your icons over at the top, and we can do a search. We're gonna do, um, uh, we're gonna do by parcel number. Most people would probably do by owner name because they wouldn't know the parcel number. This is a house on the south end of town that is owned by Leon Hyder.
Yeah, Edgar.
Yep, we're in court with him right now. And, um, he wants his assessment lowered. So, um, we'll go back, for now, we'll go back to the map. And there's his property, right there. And if you wanna look at the neighborhood and look at, um, equitable information, you can, um, check your total assessed value, and that's what these are here. Here's his six twenty-four, six seventy, and you can go around the neighborhood and see what everybody else is assessed at.
He owns a lot next door, too. Otherwise, he's on another lot.
Yeah, he does, yep. We probably should, um, I think about it and then I forget about it, but we should probably combine those lots into one lot.
Right.
Which we could do that. Um, you can click on sales to see what sales are in the area, if there are any. And, I don't know if any showed up here or not. Yeah, this was a sale for the lot back in twenty thirteen. Um, let's see, this was two thousand three. I'm gonna shut that off. Then you got building grades, and that is a, um, contentious item in our office because in a settlement offer that we got from Mr. Hyder, he wanted us to lower the grade on his house. The grade is our method of, um, quality that we apply to that particular property. And if we think his, the quality of his home is better than the neighbors', then he gets a higher grade. The highest grade is, um, an E, which is an executive, but the next one would be a one. And his is a one right here, can you see it in the corner?
Yeah.
And this one over here is a two, I don't know who owns it, I can't remember. Uh, two plus ten on this home. Uh, come on. This one here is a two plus ten.
What does two plus ten mean?
It, it's a grading scale that we use, uh, one is the best. Um, it's a certain, it goes by five percent increments above the average, which is a four grade, which started out, when I started here, four grade was like your, um, thousand square foot, um, one-story rectangular home. That was the four. And anything lesser than or above that went by five percent increments up to a one. And your one can go one plus ten, one plus fifteen.
What's the plus mean?
You're adding another, uh, increment. Mm-hmm.
So, is it ten percent?
That's a ten percent.
I think it is, yeah.
Because you said it goes by five percent increments, so that.
Another ten percent, yeah.
Another ten percent.
On top of it, yep. Yep. Um, we just got the new manual, too, delivered.
But that's interesting reading.
Oh, well, I haven't even opened the cover yet. And we gotta have that put on within two years. So, anyway, um, and this one over here is a one, and this is another Hyder home, I believe, and that's a one. But he wanted us to lower it, and I says, "No, I can't do that because it throws my whole neighborhood out of whack. Can't be done." So, I don't know where we are with that.
So, you have, for this manual, guidelines to, to, to label these, one, two, four? It's not just arbitrary that you came up with that? It's, you have guidelines to go by?
Right, but it's best if one person does the grading, and that's usually me.
Okay.
Because, you know, and I've been here long enough that I've graded a lot of homes, but mine are based on my opinions. And so, that's, you know, if somebody else came in and graded it, they might have just a little bit different opinion than I do. So.
So, there is some.
There is, right, there is, um, some opinion.
Okay.
To this, it's not cut and dry.
And that's, that's always, greater is always the first thing.
Yep, and that's what they like to, um, hit us with.
Of course.
You know? So, um, yep. And it's all based on, grading is based on the quality of construction, um, the amenities in the house, the location, um, many different things that go into the grade.
So, I'm just curious, is that acreage just south of this apartment?
Yeah, yeah.
Or someone went in and added a second floor to that? How the heck do you guys go in and try to put an assessed value on something like that when they make that big of drastic view? Is there a formula that they do to that, or?
Yeah, we go in and, um, if they would've gone outside the base, then we would've had to measure, you know.
Size-wise?
Right, but we add a second story and, um, add any amenities that are in, on that second story, like bathrooms and, uh, whirlpools or whatever's there, you know. Usually it's just, um, maybe a bathroom up there, but. And then, like on that house, they've recited it. So, and it's an older home, and we probably, um, up the condition of that house from normal to above normal. And we watch sale prices.
Right.
You know, that sort of thing.
I just didn't know how.
Yeah.
You guys calculated that out, or figured that out?
Um, let's see, it gets a little smaller. What do I have turned on? We'll get rid of the drainage, the districts, the assessed value. Um, we have property class, and if you go up to the, uh, legend, it'll tell you what the classes are according to the color. Can you see that?
No, 'cause the, the thing, that's off-screen.
Really? Well.
No, we can't see the color. I can, okay, so that could, yeah, it does have a.
Yeah, up here.
Yeah.
It's, uh, I wonder, I wonder why it does that. I can't, anyway, it'll give you the.
I have that on my computer at home, too.
Yeah, you can see what each color stands for. Uh, we have ag buildings, ag dwellings, ag land, commercial, exempt, industrial, multi-res.
Does that mean this is exempt?
Uh, that looks.
Or is it something else? Can you? Ag building.
Ag building, no, mm-hmm. Yeah, if you click on a parcel, it'll bring up your information.
Can you help Randy with zoning?
He's using it.
Ah, he is using it?
Yeah, I'll tell you what he's using it for. This is super. Um, it's, um, if you go to, let's see. This, you can do a buffer around the parcel. And it'll give you everything that's got a building on it. This one's set at a hundred feet. And then over here, it'll give you all those owners. And then you can go to, uh, results, and you can create address labels for all of them if you wanna send.
Wow.
A letter.
Wow.
You know, like, like for zoning and that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And he told me the other day that he uses the measuring tool, um, to see, you know, how far they are.
Well, yeah, then he doesn't have to go up there and wheel it off.
Right, yep.
Do it from there.
Yep.
Good for him.
Yeah, I'm glad he's using it because, because you have a measuring tool here. You can measure by feet, acres, you know, whatever you want, and.
And that tells you your zoning, so he knows whether it's residential, or?
Yeah, well, we don't have zoning on here yet. There, the only zoning maps we have are those black and white ones from nineteen ninety-five, I think. Although I started, um, let's see. Up in Rutland Township by where I live, I kinda started adding some polygons for zoning just for the heck of it to see, am I there? No.
There you are.
Here we are. Okay, so I gotta go to my layer. Well, maybe we don't have zoning on here, it's online in the office. We maybe didn't put it out to the public because it isn't usable yet. Yeah, I don't see it. But anyway, I started doing polygons according to what I thought was the boundaries of, uh, like residential within the country and that. And all we really have to do for the county is just, um, everything's basically ag land, and then go in and, um, decide what's commercial, industrial, residential, uh, A-one, A-two, that sort of thing. So, let's see, what else we got? Oh, we can go and figure out our rural residential land quality and make sure that we have, um, everything assessed correctly. And there'll be a legend for that, like rural res, we do, um, if you live on a blacktop within five miles of Humboldt, it's so much per acre. If you live on gravel, within five miles, it's so much an acre. If you're out of that area with the same qualifications, it's so much an acre, it goes down as the further away you get from Humboldt.
But it's just the major towns, it wouldn't be like from, would it be the same for both?
Mm-hmm.
You, if you were within three, three miles from both?
No, it's just Humboldt. That's our main metropolis, so. Then we have, um, dwelling condition, like before in town, and we can kinda see, compare to neighbors, what their condition is versus the parcel we're looking at. We have chicken confinement and hog confinement.
It is amazing how much information is on this site.
Isn't it? And those are the pink.
The only thing you can't do is pull up all the gray houses?
The what?
Like the gray houses or the blue houses, or?
No, we don't.
I mean, that's pretty crazy that you can pull up a hog site or.
Yeah, there's all the confinements.
Mm-hmm. And it pulls it from our Vanguard information, which goes by the pricing. And it's a certain pricing number, and all hog confinements are on a certain pricing code as lo- as with the chicken confinements, too, which we don't have very many of those. Let's see. It's just, it's pretty cool. I think that's it for our assessment layers that we added. Um, Ryan Smith, I think he was here one day and told me about it, and he says, "I'm gonna show it at I SAC," or no, at our, um, assessor's school. He says, "Then you can," I says, "You don't have to show me, I want it." You know, this is super. And then also what we added was, um, let's see. I don't know if it'll just take me that, no. We'll go back to this. We have it now where you can apply for homestead and military online. And you go to the parcel property record card here, and if you scroll down, here's your homestead credit, military, or your business property tax credit. And they can fill it out online and send it back to me. And then also, we added a sales questionnaire form that we're hoping people will fill out for us. And it's, everything will be there as far as your parcel number and all that sort of thing. Um, was there personal property included in the sale price? Uh, unusual circumstances or conditions to the sale? Did you buy an adjoining piece? Was it between a tenant and landlord? Um, and those are things that the Department of Revenue, if it's between a tenant and landlord, for example, it's kicked out of the sales ratio analysis.
Yeah, 'cause they figure there might be a compensation done there.
Yep. And was there an appraisal done on this? Um, was it a forced sale, foreclosure? Was it a percentage? Did you just buy a percentage of the property? Have you done any remodeling or renovations after, since January first? Uh, have you changed the property in any way? Any additional reasons?
So, did the land, or the, um, real estate people know this is there?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Mm-mm.
I was gonna say, because if I went through this and if you screwed something up, would they have the ability to come back and say, "No, that's, you should've put no there instead of you answered yes"? I mean, what it, you know what I'm saying? If I went through and I did that.
Yeah.
And say Madeline Miles.
Yeah.
Was selling something for me, and she said, "Oh, that isn't right." Could, would that make a big difference if?
Oh, it could, but just call us and.
Ask.
Yeah, we'll fix it. Yep, mm-hmm. Yep. Uh, rental property, let's see. And we have some, uh, did you previously claim a homestead or military? Will you be living there more than six months out of the year? You're supposed to live there six months out of the year to qualify for a homestead and be there on July first.
This is my winter home.
And my summer. And my summer. And we're kinda excited about this too. And I, when he told me, he did tell me about this a while back. And I says, "Oh, boy, I don't know if people will go ahead and fill that out or not." But I think it was Fayette County or one of the counties. He'd be surprised at the people that will do it for you. Which is a huge help for us. And you can do, um, comp search. You wanna, uh, somebody wants to, um, uh, file with the board of review or something, you just go in and put your information, like for your house, and find comparables and see if they're assessed.
The same, yeah.
The same, mm-hmm.
That'd be a nice tool there.
Yeah, and you can do a sale search too. Sale search.
I'm guessing it'd take two or three lessons for me to
No.
try to go through all that.
You just need a snowy afternoon to sit down and play with it.
Yeah, and you can't mess it up. And if you accidentally send me a new mail...
You'll reply?
No big deal. Yeah. Then I see another thing, let's see... Oh, you can go to, we'll pick a parcel. Oh, okay. Pictometry imagery. There it is.
And so it's linked to the pictometry?
Mm-hmm. Just probably that parcel or in right around it, but it is linked to it, yes. You can do, um, let's see, there's a street view too. If I can find it.
There, uh, pictometry arrows up there. Can't you just move that and give you...
Yeah, I, I haven't played with it. See, that's the previous record.
Put up in the corner there. I think you can just move down and it'll...
This one?
It'll move it around.
I think you should refer to this one right there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's, probably got eight pictures to it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And some are even different dates. Um, let's see... Bad gateway, whatever that means. What is it losing, uh...
Of course, this out at my house with the speed of my internet it'd be a cold in the afternoon right now.
Okay, there is...
This is terrible slow, it's awful. You can drive out and look at it.
Sometimes I think that's in town too, though.
There is a street view on here someplace.
Well, I'm gonna have to run down to the restroom. And this is all free?
Yeah. It's supposed to bring, but for some reason I'm getting a bad gateway. Whatever that means, but, um, let me hit the parcel first, maybe.
Now, how do you put this on your phone? Where do you go to?
Just go to Google and, and go to, um, Beacon. And it'll bring up something that says like Beacon Schneider and find the homepage for it. And, uh, you'll have to hit Iowa. And then it bring, in Humboldt County.
Humboldt County.
Yep, and it'll bring it up.
And then we'll get you all this information?
Yeah, yeah. Anything you want. Waiting. Oh, here we are. Come on.
There you go, there you go.
Whoa. Yeah, was there, that's, is that it?
You can go between the plus and the minus on the side over there.
That gives you your full county.
Okay. Well, ago there was a globe up there that had arrows on it. I thought maybe you could go to that and switch around.
I had it up the other day. It was, I mean, it was just, it came to your Google Maps. And it, it'll work. I mean, I don't know if it's the internet or the deal is.
We just changed our bandwidth on the internet, double-checked.
Did you? Let's see, if we can do... There we are. We're on one sixty-nine. I just clicked one sixty-nine. And you know, you've probably been on Google Street View before, you could...
You could just turn it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but that's about it, so... Well, and here's your main, your home screen.
Okay, that's what the home screen looks like.
Yep, and then you just go down to...
Iowa.
Yep.
Get to Humboldt County?
Yep. And like us, if we use it every day, Humboldt will come up.
Automatically.
Uh...
Oh, it says default.
Yeah, I mean, it'll...
Huh.
But we love it. It's just...
Wouldn't it be a huge asset or a huge plus for...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
On everything.
I think you'd use it a lot on your phones. I use it a lot. I even use it for different counties. If we're somewhere and I wanna look...
Do you use it for reference, research?
As long as they have this, and there's a lot of counties that do. So, yeah, and I think we're gonna be flying again this next spring.
For?
Uh, pictometry.
Speaking of pictometry, can you get me the login information on that? Cause like I said, mine, I don't know if they expired or whatever.
No, but your login is E. Underberg at HumboldtCountyIA.org.
Is that it?
That's your email.
Isn't there a password though?
Yeah, password.
But didn't we use the county password?
It's just password, P-A-S-S-W-R-D, and it might be a one behind it.
And that'll get you in there?
Yep. Let's see.
Cause that would be useful.
Actually, I call it Eagle View now.
Yep.
We can log in, log into Connect Explorer.
I know. They do a really good job baking.
Yeah.
Those are delicious.
I'm gonna have another one. Eat them up. I'll go make another pan.
What did you say it was worth?
Peacon, coconut pecan bars.
And they were, but was it a box?
No, it's all from scratch. I think it's cause they changed it to Eagle View. It's, uh...
Sammy is a good baker.
It's on Betty Crocker.
Yeah, I think so.
I went on Betty Crocker, I stayed in one there a couple of weeks ago. They have recipes every other day comes in.
Yeah, I know.
That sounds pretty good.
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll follow, HumboldtCountyIA.org.
Barely seen there some church or some organization was selling. I wasn't, I don't remember, it was some store.
The bank, it's selling pecans.
Yeah, that's racing, it's selling pecans.
Yep.
My mom buys fifty pounds of pecans.
Whoa.
Holy moly!
That's a lot of pecan.
Well, that's what every person gets as a Christmas gift, is a bag of pecans.
Okay.
So I, I think she's...
I don't have to go back there.
Down south somewhere.
Oh, I think, what is it, the congregational church?
Cause that's what I told him when he said...
Maybe that's what she gets.
The pictometry thing. It's federal.
I don't want to get mad at him.
On mine now, down here
Well...
I just have it saved.
Right, can you check into that?
Yeah, I will.
Email me?
Yeah.
Cause Beacon is basically just go to Beacon and...
Yep, yep.
No password, no nothing.
Yep, I will do that.
But pictometry, it's always, it'll let me go back into it.
And if you hang around for a couple minutes and stuff.
And you get me, get it figured out?
Yep.
Because I, something came to mind about it and I said, "Let me look at that." Couldn't get it in.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.